Call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Tom Selaya.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Ruben Montano.
Here.
Councilmember Tara Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Valerie Woolridge.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Tonight, the minister is not here that was supposed to be here, so Council Lady Woolridge will lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you have allowed us to see. We thank you for this time and this space. And Father, we ask that you give us the wisdom and knowledge to do those things that you have us in place to do. Let us always make the right decisions with your mind in place. We thank you for all things in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Speak. Pledge your allegiance, please. Charles wants to go ahead and lead us tonight.
Pledge allegiance.
... of the United States of America and to the republic with which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is called the public for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism by those commenting. May I ask staff to review a matter raised or may I ask that a matter be put on a future agenda? However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion in legal action. I have no forms. Does anybody from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll go to the next.
Item six, public hearings and presentations. Item A, public hearing on ordinance number 595-13, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Penalee County, Arizona, to provide increases in the new rates and fees for water and wastewater treatment. First reading was held on April 15, 2013, and this item will appear on the May 20 agenda for possible action.
Becky.
And council. Economist.com has provided us a utility rate study that our first rate started in 2009. It provided for incremental increases to the utility rates on an annual basis, which is July 1. We have a significant capital plan that are driving both of the utility rates. So in order for it to be such, not such a huge impact on the residents, we have incrementally increased the rates as we've gone along. The water rates will increase 5% or 7 cents per 1,000 gallons. The base meter charge will increase 5% or $1.02. The residential sewer rates will increase 10% or 36 cents per 1,000 gallons, and the base meter charge will increase 10% or $1.54. Over, we have provided a chart that kind of tells you if you are on a summer billing, which is no water usage, the increase will be about $2.66 in total. If you use about 5,000 gallons, it's about $4.39. 15,000 gallons, the increase will be $7.91. And if you use in excess of 22,000 gallons, it's $10.97. So with this, we do want to make sure that we have all of our expenditures covered and that we can proceed in our capital projects as we go along.
Any member of the council have any questions for Becky? Just a couple, Becky. Are we staying, this is in accordance with a survey that was done, what, 2008?
2008, 2009.
2008, 2009.
Yes, it took about nine months to complete, and we held public hearings on it, and then our first rates were increased in 2009.
And this is set over a five-year period to 2016?
Actually, it goes out to 2016. We did have a re-review done in 2011, '12, in which the rates still came in at the same amount. We just wanted to make sure we were still on track with these.
And we are accumulating the necessary money to cover the capital costs that we're anticipating?
Yes.
And when are we looking at encumbering these costs?
Well, there's a whole schedule set out with years that they're to be started, so you'd have to look at the capital plan within the budgets to actually tell which projects are due at which time.
So we're not really overcharging the customers. We're planning for the future by banking this money so we don't have to go out to bond as much.
Right. The Public Works Department has several projects planned for next year that will be shown to you in the budget this year.
And the cost of material and the cost of utilities going up?
Up, and they're not going down.
Covers that, so we don't have to charge an extent, a higher rate.
Right.
Thank you. Any other questions? This is just the first reading. This will be brought back next council meeting. Is that correct?
This is the second reading, but because of statutory requirements, you have to have a 60-day notification to the residents that you're going to increase rates and fees, so the actual ordinance won't be coming on until the, May the 20th.
Does any member of the audience have anything they'd like to ask or discuss on this matter? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to the next item.
Mayor, can I have you close the public hearing, please?
What's that?
Will you officially close the public hearing?
Do you want to have a public, do we need to have a public hearing on it?
You just asked for comment. You just need to close it.
Okay. Any other, no one has any questions, then we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you. Item B, presentation by the community development director, Mark Eckhoff, on proposed annexations to be filed in 2013.
Mayor, council, good evening. I want to give you a quick overview on a couple of annexations that the town is looking at, per the direction provided by the mayor and council in our strategic planning session and also per the town manager. We have looked at opportunities for various annexations, and the two that we would like to discuss with you tonight are entitled the Magic Ranch Annexation. It would be Annexation 2013-01, and then the Arizona Farms Annexation would be 2013, Annexation Number Two. The first of those annexations is about a four-square mile. The second is almost two-square miles, and you can see the population numbers in there. Roughly based on the 2010 census, the combined population in that area, about 41, 4200. I believe it's increased since the 2010 census, since that was obviously done in a time when things were not that great out in this area. This map shows our current town limits in the magenta, whatever color that happens to be, limits there, and then in the shaded area shows the two annexations. They are adjacent to each other, but mayor and council, they are split up because there is a, number one, for the size requirements, but there also is a small piece of state land right in this area that we do not currently have authorization to annex at this time, so that actually has to be left out. And the way that it is left out is it is attached to a parcel, which is the Copper Basin Railroad right through this area, and then that connects to state land in this area here, the Magma Junction area. So these two annexations, one, you'll note that they include, unlike many of the other annexations that we've done before, they include some developed areas. The Magic Ranch subdivision, all of the phases of the Magic Ranch subdivision are included in this annexation area to the one on the west, the Magic Ranch area. And then the other annexation, the Arizona Farms Annexation area, you'll note that that includes the Crestfield Manor and the Wild Horse Estates subdivisions. In addition to that, there's a lot of other undeveloped land that is entitled for future residential or non-residential land uses. So in looking at all the possible annexations, while this does present some, a few unique challenges because of existing population, existing conditions in this area, it presents a lot of opportunities for the town of Florence. It presents an opportunity to bring in residents into the town. Residents, getting the population numbers up is beneficial to the town of Florence. Also, these areas are within our planning area, so strategically, we have been contemplating growing in this area and annexing these areas for quite some time, since the 2020 general plan was adopted and maybe even perhaps earlier than that. Also, these two annexations would allow us to complete the annexation of the Lookout Mountain Two State Land Annexation, which has been kind of on the back burner, waiting to get completed, and that would be in this area here, bringing us up to Arizona Farms Road. Also, there's a lot of opportunity for commercial, high-quality commercial development in these two annexation areas with bringing in the frontages along the Hunt Highway corridor and the Arizona Farms corridor. Just in a little bit more detail here, just looking at the Magic Ranch Annexation along the Hunt Highway corridor, we have the opportunity for the planned Fry's Grocery Store, which, if you may recall, we did try to pursue what we called the Barclay Annexation in the past. Ultimately, we were unsuccessful in that annexation, but this does include that area, which would be a grocery store, some inline shops, and mini storage, and other commercial development around that area. It does include commercial opportunities along Arizona Farms Road. And within these areas of Magic Ranch that are platted today, there's a few hundred ready-to-build lots. And in fact, D.R. Horton has a sign up already that they are coming back into the market to begin production again on homes out in that area, which is a great opportunity to immediately be able to increase our permit activity by bringing in an area like this. And I say immediately, it would be obviously after we go through the annexation process. On the other area, the north, all of the current alignments for the north-south corridor would actually intersect Arizona Farms Road somewhere in this vicinity, and because Arizona Farms Road is a major east-west corridor, we realize that that's going to be a major commercial, high-density corridor. So there's some great opportunities along Arizona Farms Road for big commercial areas, apartments, offices, employment. And it'd be a great opportunity to bring that area in. Immediately north of that area is the Dobson Farms PUD, which also accounted for some non-residential, more intense types of uses along the north side of Arizona Farms Road. There's also the opposite opportunity, though, in those existing subdivisions. Crestfield Manor, again, is another area where the infrastructure was laid out, the streets were put in, and those lots are ready to build. And I believe in the near future, builders will be back in that market. So great opportunity to not only bring in the populations there today, but to grow with those areas. So these are the two annexation areas that we are looking at, and right now, staff is looking at all of the possible issues in this area and putting together a detailed analysis. And part of this process really will be hearing from the folks that live out in that area. So on May 14, at 6:30 PM in this room, we will be having a neighborhood meeting, and we've invited the folks that live in the Magic Ranch Annexation area to come to that meeting. And we will be here to give them an overview of the annexation process, what it means to them, how long it takes, just basically from the get-go, what is an annexation and how does it affect them. And we'll be here, all the department heads will be here to address their questions that come up. We already know what many of them will be, but we'll be prepared for those and the others that come up that night. And then on May 16, also at 6:30 PM, we'll be having the same type of meeting for the Arizona Farms Annexation area. Now, we have just sent out about, just shy of 2,000 letters to property owners out in these two annexation areas. We've also posted some signs. We've done press release, so we've made an effort to go ahead and get the folks out, get them coming to the meeting so we can talk about this. And the intent would be then, after these meetings, is to file, unless we're otherwise directed, to file the annexations and then proceed with the official process, which would be a public hearing, then collection of the annexation petitions, and then subsequently, at the end of that process, the adoption of comparable zoning, changing any zoning that might be in there, probably anticipate some development agreements on some of the larger parcels, et cetera, et cetera. So it is a lengthy process, and this is just the beginning, but we wanted to come here tonight and give you this first opportunity to officially present this to you and let you know what's coming up in the near future with these meetings. I'd be happy to address any questions. It's not a public hearing, and there's no action, but be happy to address any comments or questions.
Karen.
What is the estimated length of time for the annexation process to occur if we do move forward?
Well, that's a very good question. Mayor, council, the, on the long end, we have about a year to complete an annexation after it's filed. We can, however, wrap it up sooner than that if we collect the proper number of petitions reflecting that we have the majority of the property owners and the assessed value within the annexation area. So there are a large number of owners in this annexation area, so it is going to take more than just mailing out a petition. It's going to be going out there, probably having some follow-up meetings, meeting with folks, talking to the HOAs. So I'd say even on the short end, you're looking at a six-to-eight-month process. On the long end, it's 12 months.
Bill?
Yes. In our agenda, it says the meetings will be held at the Christ Per Victor Church on Arizona Farms Road. Are they going to be held there or are they going to be held here?
We actually were, we were unable to secure that facility, so that was our first choice, but we were unable to secure that facility, so we have moved both of those meetings to this facility here, Town Hall.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we clarify that for people.
Yes, thank you.
So they don't show up out there.
You have any questions, Valerie?
No, that was my question as well.
Tommy?
Have a couple of questions. One, I'd kind of like some input when we get further into this from our public services area, and the other question is, do we have a projection of how long it's going to take for us to recover from the impacts of service by bringing this amount of population? And I think that's another thing that we need to consider. We've always been a growth pays for itself, council, and I'm sure that bringing people in after missing the boat of impact fees and development agreements, it's going to create a little bit of a challenge for us to cover all the services for a specific period of time. So that's going to be my concern.
Councilmember Selaya. Staff, the department heads have been working diligently since we started moving forward in this direction. The Public Works, Police, Fire, Planning and Development, we're all working on a schedule to try and make a determination of what services are going to be impacted for what period of time once that annexation takes place and until revenue from these annexations starts coming into the town. So we are working on that process. I know that a number of the department heads are making estimates as to what infrastructure is going to be needed or what services are going to have to be expanded, especially Police and Fire, and we will definitely have those numbers for you all.
That also includes the public work side of taking a look and seeing if they can improve on some of the design in some of the areas. I don't know if the whole area is already platted. I guess what's already in the ground is not going to change, but if there's a way to maybe modify some of the things so that they're up to the building code standards that we've already, we already have established in the town, that might help some of our services too, so.
Ruben.
Yes, Mr. Eckhoff. On Wild Horse Estates, are all those streets paved? And they have curbing or is it, are they designed to funnel the water out of there during heavy rains? Or are we looking at just repairing that?
Mayor Rankin, Councilmember Montano, basically, we reviewed both Crestfield Manor and Wild Horse Estates. Their roads are all in good shape. They have basically what they call a rural-type curb and gutter system called a ribbon curb, at least in Wild Horse. Crestfield Manor has vertical curb and gutter and road curb and gutter. So basically, they're all in shape. The drainage is pretty good. In Wild Horse Estates, what we have to watch is the vegetation in the washers out there. They're overgrown. They need to be maintained. Crestfield Manor, of course, has that breach in that stormwater retention area that occurred several years ago. Our solution to that is, once the magma flood-retardant structure is completed, that additional crest will take care of two-thirds of the volume of water down Magna Wash. We anticipate commissioning a drainage report that will result in a minimal berm for that detention area and provide a safe avenue for stormwater retention.
Also, the next question is, on the other side of Crestfield Manor, those streets are pretty narrow. Are they wide enough to hold parking on curbside to include passage for emergency vehicles?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. We've been out there. We've done a detailed analysis. In that area, I think the minimum edge of pavement to edge of pavement is 28 feet. So it basically allows two cars of parking and parking on both sides, plus 11-foot lane in the center, is usually how we design, so there is sufficient room.
Thank you.
The, you mentioned the roads and so on, curbing. Are they on septic or sewer?
Wild Horse is on septic. Crestfield Manor is on sewer.
And that sewer plant belongs to?
Johnson Utilities. It's in their CCNN area, and they have sufficient capacity and distribution and collection lines for both water and sewer.
Thank you. Wayne, out in Wild Horse, there's been a dispute out there about some drainage issues on the backside, plus access to the buildings that are supposed to be going behind Crutchfield. Have you been made aware of those?
No, to be honest, I'm not aware of that at all in regards to that. We just maintain our focus on the Crestfield Manor itself, so I'm not aware of any drainage issue. There's roadway alignment issues, and there's some Hatfield and McCoy going on in that section would block roads, et cetera. So there is that issue that exists with access, especially in the railroad area.
Okay, and behind Wild Horse Estates where I was talking about, not Crutchfield, but behind Wild Horse, that's the, there's some access problems back there, too, so.
I haven't.
I'll tell you about it, because I know about a lawsuit that was filed on it. You know, Tommy, the first annex, when Florence started annexing again to bring it up to where we're at in 1980, is when we did our first annexation in a long time, up since Florence Gardens, when we brought in Conkle. We took in a lot of inmates on that first one. We made money off that, realizing that this annexation is bringing in half the amount of people that now live in the town limits. In 1980, the town's area was about two and a half square miles. And taking a look at this map now, we see where we've increased it. And the need for these annexations out into that north, we need to continue to look at it due to the fact that we need to have an influence on the Superstition Vista project that will probably be one of the biggest projects in the state of Arizona, Plan Master Community, with different entities involved in it. And we want to have our input into what goes on to our north part of town. And this just follows in, and doing that, I think that the next thing I'd like to see us do is, after we get these done, is go up and bring in Magma Junction. I think that Magma Junction area needs to be brought in. That's where the railroad track goes superior off the UP line. I'm glad to see us doing this. I think it's great. I think we need to do more to get Florence's position in the future in place. Anything else?
I'll let it rest at that.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Next item is item seven, the consent agenda. All items indicated with an asterisk will be held as a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless council members or members of the public at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, adoption of resolution number 1392-13, a resolution of the town of Florence, Penalee County, Arizona, supporting application to the Gila River Indian Community for distribution gaming revenues in the amount of $66,013. Item B, authorizing an award of, authorizing to awarded purchase to Holberg Asphalt Company for an amount not to exceed $63,025.17 to apply for high-density mineral bonding asphalt treatment on existing pavement with a PCI rating of 88 to units four and six within the Athem at Merle Ranch subdivision.
Does any member of the council have anything to discuss on the consent agenda? Any member of the public? Want anything taken off and discussed in public? Seeing none, I need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, if no other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item eight, new business. Item eight A, resolution number 1391-13, discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Penalee County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of a contract with the state of Arizona for the construction of traffic signal and related improvements for State Route 79 at Diversion Dam Road in Florence, Arizona.
Who's standing there? Wayne? Charles?
Wayne.
Mayor Rankin, Vice Mayor Smith, Town Council. Basically, what this is, is we're recommending a motion to approve the resolution for intergovernmental agreement with ADA, Arizona Department of Transportation, in order to design and construct the signalization at State Road 79 and Diversion Dam intersection. The reason for this is, last year, a needs for signalization was finalized at that intersection, and it showed that the intersection meets two warrants for signalization. And I just want to stress why the warrants are. The warrants are for eight-hour condition of traffic and also a four-hour peak hour condition of traffic. What this means is that intersection is congested throughout the day with the McDonald's in the area, with the county and private prisons in the area. That creates a congested area, especially in the first 300 feet of Diversion Dam. So this signalization will eliminate safety concerns and address left-turning movements at that point. The signal itself will also have a left-turn lane onto Diversion Dam. This is in anticipation of the Convenience Mart or the Superstop store that's going on the south side of the Diversion Dam and the future CCA prison where they bought 200 acres several years ago. And what this does, it creates a safety concern, again, for in-locking left-turn lanes, et cetera. There'll also be a signal ahead sign on the northbound and southbound lanes of State Road 79. This warns State Road 79 traffic of the existing signalization coming up. And most importantly, I think, is the emergency vehicle preemption that will be installed on First Street. This will allow a safety vehicle, specifically fire, to enter State Road 79 on a green signal, on a green signal on First Street, so that the only traffic that will be moving through that intersection will be fire trucks and police vehicles. So basically, that's why we're recommending that the resolution be passed for the IGA with ADA. We're contributing one-third of the cost of the signal, and $75,000 of the $83,000 for that, for our portion, was contributed by CCA during the expansion of their prison facilities. So we are only going to be out about $8,000 as part of our CIP plan for Diversion Dam Road. So we're recommending approval of the resolution.
Any member of the council have any questions? Wayne? Long time coming.
The.
Bill?
The third is $83,000, our third of it?
A third of it, yes. The state highway will be picking up the rest of it.
Actually, you just said CCA will be picking up $75,000, so our part will be $8,000. Is that what you said? CCA is picking up $75,000 of our $83,000. So we'll only be out $8,000. That's what Wayne just said in his presentation.
If I could, the total project is $250,000 for the signal. The town's portion is $83,000. The state's portion via federal funds is $167,000. Of the $83,000 that is our portion, $75,000 has been allocated by CCA and paid by CCA for the funding of that signal at the intersection. The remaining $8,000, $8,000 is funded by our CPA.
the state, at the intersection. The remaining $8,000, $8,000 is funded by our CIP on Diversion Dam Road.
Okay, thank you.
Which, at the time, we looked at it way back when, we didn't have that $75,000 from CCA at that point. And that was one of the big holeups on it, because they're creating the problem, or part of the problem that's needed. Too bad Geo didn't throw in the other amount, so we didn't have to pay anything. Any other discussion? Hearing none, need a motion?
I make a motion to accept the request for the resolution of number 1391-13, allowing participation with the Town of Florence and the IGA.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 1391-13. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Lisa, I understand you want to take item B off the agenda?
That's correct, sir. Move on to item C, new business. Item C, discussion approval/disapproval of authorizing the town manager to negotiate and enter into a contract or contracts not to exceed a cumulative total of $300,000 for structural engineering and stabilization plans and building repairs for the Brunen Camp building that would allow for the safe occupancy of the building and for support, and for support the town manager retaining this asset and authorizing the town manager to direct staff to market the building for optimal usage. This item will be presented by Mark Ekoff, the planning, or the community development director.
Mayor, Council, unfortunately, I need to report to you tonight. I think, actually, most of you probably know, but the Brunen Camp building is experiencing some structural deficiencies right now. As you know, the Chamber of Commerce was relocated out of that facility because of, because of those, because of that situation. Public Works has been monitoring the building for quite some time, and they've been able to see some of these cracks actually increase the situation of the building, worsening over, over time. There are a few images, but you can see the, the condition of the, of the building. There's a little bit of Boeing. There's some instability of some of the brick, brickwork. There's been some deterioration of the old foundation in the building. As you know, this was built on an old stone, stone foundation. It's pretty interesting if you go down there in the, in the basement, but there's a lot of sloughing off of the material surface. So the building's done a pretty good job for the last 100, and it's time that we, we need to take the opportunity to invest some money in this building and keep it going for the next, next 100, 100 years. And in order to do that, we've had a few folks look out, look at this building, and the estimates have been wide, wide-ranging. But we're really in the need of doing some repairs sooner rather than later. We do believe that this, it's why we don't feel that the building is about to fall over, you know, any, any time in the, in the next week or two or so. But we are very concerned about the potential of serious rainstorms, monsoon storms, wind storms, because of the impact that it could have and how it could speed up the degradation of the, of the building. So we do want to get into this building as quickly as possible and make some of the repairs that are necessary. In the estimates that we've had, the, the, the number is kind of, and the, and the strategies have been a little bit different. But in talking to various folks, we, we believe with complete confidence that the repair should not exceed between 250 and at the most $300,000. And it does look at, lately, Swan Architects and, and their structural engineers have been in the building, and they've given us a lot of great ideas. It probably would be beneficial to, to dig around the foundation a little bit and get a better idea. So that's one of the things that we don't have, all those numbers 100% today. Do need to do a little more digging, a little looking into this, and then they'll be able to know for sure whether we can stabilize the existing foundation that, that is there, or potentially, do we need to prop it up with another means. An extreme alternative that's out there is to potentially use a, a new pier foundation that would be put under, under the building. Essentially, it would, it would make this foundation that's here basically cosmetic at that stage, and new foundation would replace, replace that. I don't know at this stage that we'll need to go into that kind of solution, but we do know that we need to act on this and do something. So this is why this particular item is worded this way, where we would like the mayor and council, if you're so inclined, to allow the town manager to finalize negotiations in a contract for an cumulative amount not to exceed 300,000. That would be for the, the structural engineering, the stabilization plans, and the repairs that need to, need to be done to ensure the safe occupancy of that building. When the building is then rehabilitated, we would like to get the, get the building back into use, ideally in a way that would increase the foot traffic, the utilization of that, of that building.
Any member of the council having questions? Tara?
To Becky, what is the balance of our CIP budget right now? Because in looking at annexations that we're moving forward, just a funding check.
Toward the end of the year, projecting out, including this project, we'll probably have in excess of $10 million in the CIP fund.
Thank you.
Any other members of the council have any questions? There, there's not going to be any restoring the building while we're doing the stabilizing, is that correct? We're not going to take it back to what it should, should look like.
Mayor, Council, you're, you're, you're correct. The intent of, of this project is to get the building safer, safer occupancy. Now, that may include potentially more than looking at, once the structural engineer and the architect get in there, there may be more than what we can see with our eyes today as far as the cracking in the bricks or some leaking or some drainage issues or the, or the foundation. There may be minor electrical, some other minor improvements, but certainly the intent is to just get the building ready to be occupied again.
So the money that we have in our CIP, is that designated for something already? Are we bumping a project to move this?
No, the Capital Improvement Project Fund is for any type of projects. And what we currently do is we take the residential construction tax money and we place it in that fund. Also, this year, I moved an ex, pardon me, $4 million out of the general fund, fund balance that was just sitting there doing nothing. And it was basically money that we had collected when our residential construction first started in sales tax money that was not moved into this fund. So I moved it over. And that can be used for any general government project in there right now. You do have two other funds, the Construction Tax Fund, which is governmental construction debt, pardon me, and the Food Tax Fund. Those are specific as to what they're for. One, the Food Tax Fund is for recreational construction or CIP, and the governmental is for any town facility. So those monies are still out there for other construction projects. But the, the CIP fund has all of the accumulation of the past general fund monies that were transferred into it, plus any new tax monies.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, and let me add also, we did have a, we had to borrow money for our fire truck to finance that. So some of that money is also sitting in there to be paid out next, next time. I'm, I'm sorry, we did pay it out, but to actually expense it next year.
Any other question? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve authorizing the town manager to negotiate and enter into a contract or contracts not to exceed $300,000 for structural engineering for the Brunen Camp building.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the town manager to negotiate and enter into a contract or contracts not to exceed a total of $300,000 for the Brunen Camp building. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Andrew report.
Mayor, Council, the town manager's report is located in your booklet. I do not have anything further to add at this point in time, but if you have any questions, I'm here to answer anything you may have.
Thank you. Department head reports, all department heads are here, or the majority of them, or represented of them. Do any member of the council have any questions? Hearing none, we're going to the second call to the public. Same as I said before, call the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take any action on any matter during open call to the public unless the matters are properly noted, properly noticed and discussion, for discussion of legal action. Any member of the public? Larry, did you have something?
Yeah.
Thank you. Come forward, please.
Larry Coler, Florence Gardens. You've just authorized, if I understand it right, $300,000 repairs on a building with no return on investment analysis. How do you do that? Nobody's making any projections on how that building's going, what, what we're going to get out of that building for our expenditure of $300,000. How does that work?
Can I respond?
Bill? Yeah, if it was on the agenda, we can discuss it. Bill, go ahead.
We're going to, my understanding is, we're going to try to get tenants in there and have commercial operation that will generate tax money and foot traffic.
Where's the analysis?
Pardon me?
Where is the analysis? That's a feel-good vote.
The analysis?
You're saying that's a possibility. How long do you think it'll take?
Well, it's the same as.
For that building to pay back $300,000?
Well.
And that's just the beginning. That's just to stabilize.
Well, okay, we've, we've got a choice of let the building deteriorate and fall down, or we, which it, it's in the historical district. It's, it's a great addition to the historical district. We'd hate to lose it. But I think over time, it will generate enough tax revenue and foot traffic of, of helping, see, we're trying to redevelop downtown, and, and the more buildings that we can save and have generating foot traffic, those people won't spend money only there. They'll spend money in other surrounding businesses. That's what we're trying to do with the Silver King, the Brunen Camp. It's, that's, that's, that's what we're trying to do. That's, I, as far as an analysis, I don't know.
Tommy?
If, yeah, if I can add to Bill, I, I agree with him. The alternative is, we let the, we let the building go without any revenue, or we do something and recapture some revenue. And I, I really don't see the point of, of just letting an asset like that go. I mean, if you, if you've got a, if you've got a leaky roof, you're going to fix your roof. You've got to put money into your personal assets in order to keep them up to current. It's not going to make any money in the condition that it's in right now.
If I could be so bold, why don't you just keep putting money in your old car then? Why do you replace it?
What?
Because eventually, you say, it's costing more to repair it, it's worth.
I, yeah, but I don't think you can put a worth on this building. I mean, this building is, is a historical building.
It's one of the most.
If it was a, if it was a building that was of, construction that was made within the last five or 10 years, we'd say tear it down if that's the, if that's a decision that, that made most economical sense. But this is not a replaceable building.
With all due respect, when you all get in your car to go home tonight, rip out the rearview mirror and start looking to the future instead of the past. Thank you.
That's what we're, that's, that's the, that's the reason we're doing this, is because we are looking at the future.
No, you're not.
Oh, absolutely.
How are you looking at the future?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Chris?
Thank you. Chris Reed, 125 West, West Ruggles. As a member of the town's historic commission and a preservationist at heart, I want to thank you and the staff for this resolution. I think it's really important that we do, like Bill says, preserve the downtown as a unique entity. We just recently had a fam tour of tour bus operators from all over the country coming here, and they were astounded with the downtown. At the museum where I work, I had a couple, two ladies from Mesa who had never really been to Florence before. They walked in and said, this is a treasure. And that is what makes the town unique, is our historic buildings that nobody else really has. So I just want to thank you. I, I can see a long-range goal of people really recognizing the uniqueness of Florence as a historic district, and I applaud you for taking this move. Thank you.
There's one other thing I'd like to state before we finish. There's, there on Bailey Street, that, there were, there's that red brick building there, I forget what it's historically called. But anyway, there was a nice article in the paper about it this week. There's a couple that have put in an antique shop, and they're looking at also selling pies maybe next winter. And they've done a beautiful job of fixing it. I mean, really cleaned it up, done some great improvements. I think we're on the verge of, of a renaissance downtown. I think the time has finally come, and there are people that are willing to, are willing to come in and invest. And I think people be quite surprised in, let's say, five, six years down the road of where we're at compared to where we're at now.
Going to call for the council. Tommy?
I just want to offer thanks to our police and fire departments. We had a, kind of a catastrophic water leak this past Friday evening. Our fire department was up there with brooms and sque, squeegees and helping us to pull out all of the water. We really appreciate all of the efforts from, from the fire department. So, big thanks.
Ruben?
That goes ditto for me as well, as for the fire department, police department. It was amazing to see them, as soon as they got there, the first thing they did was grab squeegees, grab mops. They're trying to assist, Tom was there for, for facilities for the county, and I was there for the sheriff's office. And it was just a, a good group of people working together, trying to save that building over there and whatever materials and, and occupants that were there, and all their supplies and evidence and documents. So it was just really interesting to see everybody work together.
Gary? Bill?
I have nothing.
I'd just like to give recognition to our Parks and Rec Department. Right now, there's a phenomenal little league program going on. And I know, Ray, you're working with coordinating
events for the summer activities for the youth in the town of Florence, and we really appreciate that. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
There is one quick thing.
Go ahead, Bill.
I just want to say that I, that was a great idea of having that speed limit on Main Street, the electronic speed limit sign. I think that's really helped. A lot of people have been, you know, not real happy with how people speed through there. But that's, that's a good use for that. That, we needed to do that for a while. Thanks.
My call to the public is, when you're going south on Main Street down by the high school, notice that at the, the high school crossing has been painted today. Not only that, a light has been put up there to illuminate that crossing. I had a little discussion months ago with ADA Transportation Board, and it's getting done. We're still not done. We still have to take care of the, the closure of State Road 79B, and I'll be going to a meeting on that here pretty quick. I want to respond to comments made about looking in the future and taking rearview mirror out of your car. Florence is a historical town. We are looking to the future, if you take a look at what we're doing. But we also, as the future is the past, and the past has got to preserve, be preserved for the future to go forward. Are we throwing good money after bad money? No, I don't think so. I think it's an investment in the future of Florence, whether we keep it on the town's property roll, sell it to somebody, lease it out. It's something that draws attention to. to people that are into historic Arizona. So, as this council, I believe we're a progressive council, I believe that we're taking a look for what's right of the citizens of Florence, all the citizens. Do I want to see new things here? Yes, because the old saying about Florence is a good place to grow up, move away, get a job, retire and come home and die, those days are going to be gone. Now, we're going to have a town that's going to be a good place to grow up, stay here, earn a living, and retire here amongst your family, and that's what we're after. And I think, I think that this council is doing a good job of that. I want to thank the council for that. Need a motion, go into executive session? Oh, wait a minute, you want to say anything?
The only thing I have is a question for Lisa. Lisa, I believe they have some budget meetings coming up. Do you have those dates?
The date is May 13th at 5:00 in this room.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Need a motion adjourned to executive session?
Make a motion, we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second adjourned to executive session. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carried, we're adjourned to executive session.